Good evening. It's 6:31. We're going to start our committee meeting tonight for the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee here on July 12, 2022. I, Councilmember Joe, call this meeting to order. This meeting will be conducted in person and virtually in compliance with the Governor's proclamation related to COVID-19. It's modified a little bit, but there are two public comment periods available tonight. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or members of the public may make comments after the presentation of each individual agenda item. The Chair will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda. First item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public may address the committee at this time, in person or virtually. Those who are signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you are joining by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. I'll wait a moment to see if anyone has elected to raise their hand, but first, clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes, Councilmember Joe, we have two members of the public in attendance tonight who have signed up to speak.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Come on up, please. Please identify yourself and tell us you're tied to the city, connection to the city, and then we'd love to hear your comments.
There we go. Hi, I'm Isika Luminary Bay, a damasal here in Issaquah Highlands. Been here almost five years now, and I am a Moorish American descended from the Al-Maroc in Morocco. And pleasure is all mine to be here and share in with the planning of the community. I've taken notice of all the changes that are being made. They are wonderful, and my specialty is park and recreation, so I was really excited the last meeting when you talked about the green necklace and Lake Talbot, Park Talbot, they are very important to the community. Being a foster parent licensed in two different states, children are my specialty, so thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining us. Your turn, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Safara El Bay. Also, I'm Moorish American, descendant of Morocco, born in America. I have been living here in Issaquah for three years now. I'm also standing in behalf of the Office of Wazir, Simone Bel A, Bale, and I am here to just hear things of what's going on in the community and also kind of give some input as well, so we can get the city together and come together and work together, so we can all live harmoniously. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. If the deputy will indulge me for a moment, we did receive an email concerning the blue door recently, and there was a gate that was put up around that door around the Fourth of July, and I think it was a temporary door, but could you just give us a brief update on what happened with that? It's very important that we honor our sister city, Chechawin, and I was part of that process as we put that together many years ago, so just if you can give a little update.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Joe. We do have a door that was a gift from our sister city, Chechawin, in Morocco. That door sits outside of City Hall, and during the Fourth of July celebrations, there was a fence put up around the door in an attempt to try to protect the door from a lot of the, just any incidental harm that could have occurred during those Fourth of July festivities. That fence was put up by a third-party organization who ran the festival, not by the city, and so we contacted, when hearing that there was a fence blocking access to the door, we contacted the festival producer. They were able to take the fence down, and so the door remains accessible to all.
Thank you very much for that update. I appreciate it. All right. Deputy clerk, are there any members of the public online that would, oh, actually, is there anyone else here tonight in, here in the room that would like to give a public comment? If not, we'll move on to online. Deputy clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Joe, Connie Marsh is online and would like to address the committee. Ms. Marsh, I've made you a panelist. You can now unmute and turn on your video.
Hi, I'm Connie Marsh, and obviously, I'm from on Squawk Mountain. So, this initial comment is actually about the format of the new committee meetings. In the past, we, we, those that be decided that it was easier to have a conversation when you were not up on the dais and you were down at the tables, and it was easier to actually speak amongst yourselves in that format. I've noticed that in your, the new method, we are up on the dais again, and I've watched a few of these meetings, and that conversational component that was in those prior meetings has still not recovered, right? For some reason, in this format, each council member speaks, and the next council member speaks, but there isn't dialogue amongst council members where you're responding to each other's thoughts or comments, or maybe boosting ideas amongst yourselves. And I think that's what I missed so much about the old format of these meetings, is that they were actually a way for council members to communicate, and then if community members spoke, you were able to discuss amongst yourselves how, what you thought about those comments. And I, I think that that form of dialogue makes for better government, rather than each person just presenting their individual ideas sort of out into the pool. So, I just wanted you to take that on board. I am hinting that a less formal way of seating might help solve this problem, but there's probably 20,000 other ways to solve that problem or make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie Marsh. Appreciate it. Are there any other members of the public online that would like to speak?
No, Councilmember Joe, there are not.
All right. So, seeing none, we will move to the next item on the agenda, but please note, public comments may be made after the presentation of tonight's agenda item, and we do value feedback from the public and take it under advisement in decisions that we make. All right, we'll move on to the agenda now. Tonight, we have first a review and approval of the minutes from May 10 and June 14. Any comments, changes, additions? Okay. Do I have a motion then to approve the minutes in item number three?
I'll move that.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Fantastic. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Let the record show that passes 3-0 for approval of the minutes of May 10 and June 14. That takes us to item number four, ID 1211, Community Mobility Investment Fund Public Engagement, and Jean Paul, Management Analyst, is joining us tonight to go over the staff report and presentation. Would, oh, that microphone has been turned off. I appreciate it. We're all set.
Thank you, Chair Joe, and good evening, councilmembers. I'm Jean Paul, the Management Analyst in the Executive Office, and if you bear with me momentarily where I can get the presentation up. Okay, my presentation this evening is on the public engagement for the Community Mobility Investment Fund. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the administration's proposal for the public engagement and receive this committee's feedback on three primary components of the proposal. Here are the three areas where the administration is seeking your direction. First, does the committee agree with the approach of using digital budget, public engagement for a survey? Second, should the administration consider trails projects as suitable for inclusion in the survey? And finally, what are the desired next steps once the engagement process is complete? As brief background, the mayor and city council have identified that the infrastructure needs for the city are greater than the city's current ability to pay for them. To help determine the community's priorities for the next 10 years, the mayor convened the Capital Finance Community Task Force. That task force met from September of 2021 to March of this year and provided their recommendations for infrastructure priorities and timing to the administration. To implement some of these recommendations, the administration proposed the Community Investment Strategy, which was recently discussed at both the June 27th and July 5th council meetings. One component of the overall investment strategy is the Community Mobility Investment Fund. The council supported the concept of allocating $2 million of American Recovery Plan Act, or ARPA, funding, and using a public engagement process to determine which small capital projects would receive that funding. Initially, the administration proposed the shortlist of projects would include transportation and parks projects. However, based on the council's desire to focus more funding towards transportation projects, the administration adjusted the plan. The project list will only include projects that focus on multimodal or transportation safety improvements. So, the first area where the administration is seeking feedback tonight is the approach to public engagement. The city's public engagement toolkit describes three levels of engagement that ultimately depend on the level of feedback needed. From left to right on the slide, these levels are defined as collaborate, consult, and inform. The consult level is described as consult with community members by educating them on a limited number of options and asking for feedback. This fits the administration's vision of preparing a shortlist of capital projects and asking for the community to prioritize them. As you can also see highlighted at the bottom, the document even uses the example of prioritized capital improvement plan projects to illustrate when this level of engagement is appropriate. In order to best accomplish this consultation, the administration intends to use two tools, information materials and an online survey. The administration envisions having online informational materials, such as a video summarizing the projects, or website content with pictures and designs from the CIP. This will allow community members to learn about the options, and following this informational content, there will be a survey that will enable those members to rank the projects to indicate which should be funded from the $2 million. The administration is also proposing to conduct this project, process entirely digitally. The city's communication team noted that the Community Investment Strategy has been one of the more popular items on the city's digital platforms, so we'd like to continue engaging people where they already are. The second area where the administration is seeking feedback is a clarification on the criteria for the list of capital projects. As a reminder, the criteria for compiling the initial list of projects includes eligibility for ARPA and an ability to be completed within the ARPA timeline, projects that focus on transportation, and projects that have been already vetted and approved in the CIP. After that initial screening process, the administration intends to use the list of criteria from the task force prioritization exercise to help narrow down the list. These criteria include projects that address pain points across the city, have high impact relative to their cost, address areas where the community expressed the least satisfaction but highest importance in last year's community survey, and finally, projects that improve life and safety. While the feedback from the council was clear on most points, the administration is looking for the committee's direction to clarify one aspect of the criteria. There are potential trails projects that could provide connections to the city's parks and nearby neighborhoods that are currently classified as parks projects and therefore would not be part of the survey. We are requesting your direction tonight on whether the administration should consider these as suitable mobility projects for the survey. The third and final area where we're asking for your feedback this evening is that the desired next steps once the engagement process is complete. Specifically, the administration is looking for input on how to treat the results of the survey and where to bring them back to the council. Although it's possible to describe the results of the survey as a pledge or a guarantee of funding, the administration is proposing that the results be considered as a recommendation for the council. And while the results of the process could return to this committee, we're also proposing to take them to a council committee of the whole meeting as part of the biennial budget deliberations in October. In terms of timing and next steps, the administration will incorporate your feedback tonight and use July and August to compile the list of capital projects and prepare the public engagement. We plan to conduct the public engagement in September and provide at least three weeks for the community participate. We'd like to bring the results of this process to the Committee of the Whole Budget Deliberations in October, and finally, the funding for projects could be included in the overall council action on the biennial budget in November. This is the final slide for the presentation. It reiterates the three areas where we're seeking your direction this evening, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Paul, thank you. Much appreciated. Let me just start out with a couple of questions, just to get us on the same page for those that are watching and those that will see the recording later. When we're talking about a, a, a survey or kind of an engagement strategy, we're not seeking a survey that is statistically significant or has, will make the plus or minus 3% type things that you see on TV for a presidential poll. We're really talking about an informal community survey that's trying to find out what they would like to do with, with these projects. Is that correct?
That's correct. It'd be just convenient sample of those willing to participate.
Okay. Thank you. And then for the digital public engagement, I'll just ask one question to kind of kick it off, and then I'll hand it off to the other members of the committee. Is it a type of engagement that people can come in and vote numerous times, and do we have a way to hear or discern whether the person is a member or resident of the city or a person who is outside of the city?
So, I think responding to the first component of your question, the survey platform the city uses, people are able to vote multiple times, but we can identify those multiple uses and screen them out. So, there's no, you know, screen if you return that says you've already filled out the survey, but we're able to identify multiple responses from the same place, so we could screen those out. I think the second component is whether somebody would be a resident of the city or not. I think we could ask a demographic question if somebody would be willing to volunteer that information, but again, nothing preventing participation if, if somebody wanted to complete that process online.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That gives us some context. Any other initial questions before we talk about what's next steps we want to take here tonight? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll go ahead and talk then about the direction needed and the comments that are on the screen right there. Deputy Administrator, do you have some additional comments?
Councilmember Joe, you do need to take public comment, so did you want to do that now?
Let me ask, do you have any other questions before we start that public comment period about this particular part? Okay. All right. Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Appreciate it. We will now take public comments on this item, and we'll start with members that might be present in person tonight if they'd like to make public comment. Go ahead and step forward to the dais and turn on the microphone.
Thank you. This is Isika. The questions that I have pertaining to this project, I noticed that you said the parks are removed from this project, did you say, Mr. Paul? They are. Will they be put back on, or is there consideration for upgrading the parks, specifically more the apparatus?
Go ahead, Deputy Administrator.
Thank you. I know that we don't typically respond to public comment questions directly, but it seems like maybe this format, we can, we can do it so that everybody has the right information. What, what Jean Paul is referring to is the one survey part of the Community Investment Strategy, so it's, I think you're familiar with that from the last council meeting that you watched. That's great. Thank you. So, there still, as part of the Community Investment Strategy, is that big anchor investment in the parks of $4 million. There's still, so that's, that's proceeding. This is just one, one small piece of that work that's really focused on mobility-related improvements. So, there's still plans for more parks investments, also looking at the Park Strategic Plan next year, and the potential for a Parks District that would increase investments in parks further. So, there's still some parks-related projects that are planned as we presented last time. This is just one component that is focusing on mobility in terms of our infrastructure.
Okay. Wonderful. I'll hold all questions for later. Thank you.
Any other members of the public present tonight that would like to comment on this? All right. We'll turn it to the digital world then. Deputy clerk?
Councilmember Joe, I see Connie Marsh's hand raised. I don't know if it's from before or if she wants to comment on this item. Ms. Marsh, did you want to comment on this item?
Um, wait, wait, wait. I do want to comment on this item again. Sorry, the screen went away for a moment there. So...
Connie, you have five minutes.
Yeah. This presentation does not tell you what the projects might be for parks that would be included as transportation, so it is very difficult to know what I would support or not support without that information. So, council, if you could ask that question, like, what are we talking about? I have always disagreed with the idea that recreational trails are not also potentially transportation and need to be included in the mobility master plan, which did not happen. So, I think you also, if you would, request that those overlays be included so that people can have on-street and off-street ways of walking, which would create more efficiency. And then, when you talk about the surveys, having a list of serv, of particular items might be okay, but you also have to say that you don't like any of them, and then provide another comment for people to put in their own ideas, because they may have better ideas than anyone, and if you allow them to, to, to give you those, that would be a bonus. Also, there's a group of people who you are entirely missing if you go totally digitally. So, I would say that there should be a component in a place like a library or a city hall where you could drive people who don't necessarily use technology, where they would be able to answer a survey in person, because you're basically cutting off many people over the age of 70 and, or 60, and they may be use, be heavy multimodal transportation users. So, I, I think you are, you're missing a vital component there, and I think I will stop at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Appreciate that. So, thinking about the survey itself, I guess I'd like to hear from the administration in terms of, will this solely be a digital outreach, or are there other forums that, that we will be using? For instance, I see that we have a number of herd-on-the-street kiosks, if you will, that have some newsletters and information for the public out there. Will that be one of the methods that we would use to reach out to the public, and, or are there others?
So, I think at the end, we're trying to drive people towards an online survey, so we may disseminate, you know, hey, there's an online survey through other means, you know, whether it's word on the street or the city's newsletter bulletins, you know, the common communication tools, but we're probably, at the end of the day, requesting that they go online and, and complete that survey.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I need to conclude the public comments, so are there other members of the public that might be online that would like to speak tonight?
Councilmember Joe, I don't see any other virtual hands raised. Oh, David Kapler has just raised his hand and would like to address the committee. Mr. Kapler, I've made you a panelist. You can now unmute and turn on your video.
Yeah, I was, I guess partly, my question is, are we just talking about the, the first, the first one here? Are we talking about all of the directions needed items? First, you know, the, my pitch is that, you know, where we can meet needs to have transportation and access parks, that's great. If we, one problem with, if we don't access our parks with trails, people access them with their cars, and then we have the parking issue. So, you know, that's one of the, the benefits of having trails, if people don't have to park a car to get to a place, and that can apply, of course, to shopping and other recreation or, you know, those kinds of things, but especially for parks. Confluence Park, a huge park that's very popular, but has very limited parking, is an example on Rainier, and a little squeaky one off of, in the back, in the southwest corner. So, let's think about reducing amount of impervious surface for parking by having people getting to be able to get to parks and other places by walking or bicycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapler. Much appreciated. Any other comments from members of the digital public?
Councilmember Joe, there are no other members of the public wishing to speak at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. So, that'll take us to the discussion portion, and I can tell from my colleague, Barb De Michelle, that she has a great deal written down to share with us, but let's start with Mr. Hall, Zach Hall, our Deputy Counsel President.
Well, thanks very much. Before I launch into my comments, and I'll just ask a question, and then, Councilmember Michelle, if you have comments, feel free to go before me. So, I thought Connie's question was, was a good one. It was going to be kind of interwoven in my comments on what are the, what are, what are the lists of projects that we're going to be putting in the survey for the community to rank and to vote on? Is it all, basically all mobility projects that are in the CIP that aren't currently fully funded, that have a mobility aspect to them or a trail aspect to them, or what other? Oh, and that fit those criteria, so this kind of like this funnel, but is that correct?
Essentially, we laid out the criteria that we're going to try and create a shortlist. Yes, there will be mobility projects in the CIP that are currently not completely funded. I think we're, our hope is to winnow down that list, so it's not just, hey, here's 30 projects, pick from them, but something more realistic, whether that's, you know, five to 10, something smaller. And again, we're going to try and use the prioritization criteria from the task force to kind of create that shorter list, so it's a little less of just a wave of information for people to try and make their way through before they prioritize the, the projects themselves.
Okay, and I think I just got to my point while you were speaking, too. That was helpful, but, so are we putting all of the trails projects that fit these criteria in the survey, or just trails projects that we would consider to be projects that would feed into our mobility network? So, for, for example, if there's a trail project that's in the center of a park or something like that, would that be considered, you know, feeding into our mobility network in the same way as this policy question of saying, well, these trails connect to walking paths that are part of the mobility network, and that's why we're considering the question of, of parks trail projects in addition to this? Does that make sense, or am I just rambling at this point?
I, I think I understand. Essentially, I don't think we're proposing to put all the trails projects on the list. There are at least a couple that we are considering that would provide this component where it's connecting to a neighborhood, where there's a little bit of a, a mobility component, rather than just simply, here are all the trails that aren't funded.
Go ahead and please continue.
All right. Well, very good then. I'll run through my comments. First and foremost, thanks to the public commentators, folks who are here in person, also who are online, who wanted to chime in on this interesting topic. I do think that approaching the community through digital public engagement and asking them to complete a survey is probably the most efficient and best way to collect many results in the short amount of time that we have to do this, so I appreciate that recommendation. I do agree with the sentiment, though, that there are probably some ways that are not digital, that we can direct people to online platforms where we have that website, where we have those videos and that survey, and I might ask the administration to brainstorm what might be practical for doing that in the short amount of time that we have in a way that... the short amount of time that we have in a way that residents will actually see more because, you know, putting it on Facebook, putting it in our e-newsletter, which already goes out to many, many people and we have many followers, is the most efficient way to get it out to a lot of people right away. If there is something that's similarly efficient, maybe flyers at Concerts on the Green or something like that, if there are a number of them between now and when the survey closes, that might be of benefit. But I'll leave it up to the administration to kind of think about what might be efficient in that sense. Should the administration consider park trail projects? Yes, asterix, but absolutely, I completely agree that trails are healthy trail networks, support community mobility, and especially if we're thinking long-term. And how are we, you know, making investments in our community for people to get around that aren't just cars and pavements? Investing in our trails is a great way to kind of future-proof mobility into the future. So I completely agree with that. And I thought David, I thought your point was a really good one, too, especially when we're thinking about the future of how we travel to our parks without cars and pavement, too. Investments in trails contributes to that effort as well. So yes, I agree with the second bullet, as long as those, you know, projects actually have connections to our mobility network and contribute to mobility. And then finally, yes, I agree that we should consider these as recommendations and that they should go to a council of the whole meeting. I had originally thought it might be of benefit to come back to this committee or even to the Transportation Advisory Board, but I've been convinced that the timing will be difficult with budget development. And we want to make sure that the full council has an opportunity to see this before, days before passing the final budget. And also, based on, you know, our role, which is really to provide in-depth policy guidance on mobility and infrastructure, I don't think it's necessarily a need for us to consider these projects as they come back. That's really more of a budget decision for the council to make. So those are my remarks.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Barb D. Michelle.
Thank you. What a great introduction that was. So item number one, this is the one that I've got a lot, I'd like us to consider. And I didn't ask questions because I think these are questions that the three of us up here need to answer and not the staff. But so I agree that the digital platform is the way to go. And I also think that as we are getting further and further into digital engagement with our community, we're beginning to understand that public meetings are sometimes a barrier to a lot of people. They can't make it. It's at the wrong time. It's at the wrong place. They can't get transportation, whatever. But people can participate digitally whenever they are able and ready to do so. So I agree. But I do have some concerns that I think we need to think really thoughtfully about before we open this up. And the first one is, when I think about the map of Issaquah and I think about the neighborhoods we have, we've got Highlands with about 10,000 people. We've got a smaller neighborhood like Sycamore. We've got the South Cove. And how are we going to help people think about transportation projects that are in other neighborhoods besides their own neighborhood? And I think Connie Marsh was right on in her commentary. How do we, although she was talking to us, but I think the same thing applies. How do we encourage a dialogue around these projects? And how do we keep it from being just a popularity vote? So if there's a project that really benefits the Highlands, for example, with 10,000 people, of course, they're going to get the most votes, I would guess, you know? So how do the folks in Sycamore or South Cove get their project equally considered? So, you know, the school district has used a method for a long time that involves people placing their ideas, you know, and letting other people read their ideas and so forth. That's one thing that I'm thinking of. I think we've also invested in the Miro, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, platform where you put little sticky notes and stuff. And maybe we could ask people a simple question like, why are you voting for, you know, fill-in-the-blank? Or I'm voting for fill-in-the-blank because fill-in-the-blank, you know? So just a way for people exchange the importance of the project to their neighborhood and why it's important to them. Because I think the component we're missing when we get all digital is that interaction between people. And I think people need to have that interaction in order to understand why other, why projects that may be important to one neighborhood or benefit one neighborhood over another neighborhood need to be considered. So I think we need to really be thinking thoughtfully about that before we go to just a survey where people click and the number of votes is the way it comes out. We need some way of getting people to be talking to each other or thinking about each other or thinking about the breadth of the city and all the different needs that we have in our city with all these different neighborhoods. So that's my concern there. On the other hand, I am not saying let's go to a public meeting because I agree, we get a lot more engagement digitally and in many ways, I think we get better engagement. But this is asking people to consider several different projects and sort of rank them. And so how are we going to do that so that every neighborhood gets a fair shot? That's my question. So it may be ranking instead of just voting is one way to do this, you know? So like we have ranked voting, this would be ranked prioritization. So I don't know. I'll stop and see if there's any comments from either of my council members before.
No, I think that we need to be thoughtful about how we drive people to the digital survey, as was pointed out. And as you were talking, I kind of made a list. And the Kiwanis group certainly would be a good group to get a flyer or two to hand out to say, you know, fill out this digital survey even though you don't necessarily live in the city. Use our city roads to get to the meetings and you're active in our community. The same with the Rotary Club here, which meets every Tuesday. June 21st, the mayor is giving a state-of-the-city presentation to the Chamber of Commerce at noon. That'd be another place to highlight it and perhaps hand out a flyer, driving people to the digital survey. Highlands has their events on Fridays throughout the summer. Concerts on the Green, I think was pointed out, and engaging visit Issaquah and DIA to at least talk to their boards and give them information so that they can pass that on to the important people that they know. And of course, we as council members also must make sure that we're engaged in the community whenever we see them and talk with them and let them know the survey's going on as well. So that's just kind of a short list that I kind of put together kind of on the fly. But if we can get the word out to those organizations and hopefully we can get some robust participation there. Hope that addresses some of the comments that you made there.
Fascinating. Connie, I mean, very good point. This is the value of not having just one person make decisions, right? Because I didn't even think of that, right? You know, and now we get to have this detailed conversation. So I guess my first thought is, you bring up a really good point about how do we ensure that this isn't a popularity contest essentially by this community gets the most people to fill out the form and now the boat is named Bodie McBoatface, right? Or what was the example for Seattle Department of Transportation?
That's a good example, yes.
But at the same time, so I liked your suggestion about, well, maybe it could be ranked or maybe there could be another question that says like, well, why did you vote for this? Or I voted for this one because, and then they could kind of talk about their rationale. So I was wondering if staff could comment on our ability to do one of those two things and if there is a benefit to doing just a pure vote over a rank in terms of, you know, a community's engagement with an actual interface and like how long they, you know, actually interact with like a survey? And is that kind of thought into this at all?
So I believe that the tools the communications team has allows us to do a ranked vote. So if that's a desire, we can certainly incorporate that. What was the second part of your question?
Yeah, there was so ranking, so, okay, now we know that it's functional. We could do that if we wanted to. But then also, just to add a second kind of rationale question essentially. So like I, if we did just do a vote or if we do a ranking and we just say, you know, why did I rank this one number one or something like that? So we get some more information about everyone that voted for this project said they voted for this project because it was down the street and their street captain said, fill out this survey or something like that. And then, so I guess that's also a functionality question. Would we be able to do something like that? That seems like it would be more simple than ranking, right?
Yes, and it could be a fill-in-the-blank or, you know, pre-populated list of, you know, top five reasons for you to pick why you chose that one. I don't know if you have a preference. We could certainly leave it as a fill-in-the-blank if it's kind of an opportunity for more dialogue or more ideas.
And then my other thought on this is for the committee then is, if we're able to do that and collect the information, this will eventually sense, or at least my feedback was that we consider it as recommendations and not necessarily a guarantee of funding, will be a public policy decision for council to make, right? So now we'll have the information to say, this was a popular project for this reason, but we actually think that this project is a really important one for this public policy reason, right? So we'll be able to have that kind of high-level discussion once that date is in. So is that kind of what you were thinking? Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Good conversation. I see Deputy Administrator Snyder wants to make some comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. I would just add to that, you know, we're still very much in the creation phase of the survey, right? So I think point well-made and point well-taken that we want to make sure that the survey results, that we consider the why and the motivations and that we want to make sure that the neighborhoods all have an equal shot when it comes to the transportation project. So that's, thank you for that feedback and consideration, and we'll certainly use that. I think even as you've had that discussion today, there's a couple of ways that we could try to approach that question. And so I think we'll take all of this information into account as we dial in, what are the questions of the survey, what's the structure of the survey, et cetera. So I think there's a couple of options that we can look at and we'll certainly be taking all of this to heart. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember D. Michelle, do you want to comment on the second and third one?
Yes. I definitely agree that we include trails projects. I think that is certainly, walking paths are a part of our mobility, overall mobility strategy. And I agree with Councilmember Hall that, of course, they would need to be related to our, you know, our strategic plans in the transportation area. I think, we're not asked to comment on this, but I actually do like the idea of just giving the public the, just the projects that meet the criteria. I think if it's outside the criteria, it's not really going to be considered and we kind of set up a false narrative there that you can choose a different one. So let's just be honest with them and say, these five, you know, these five or six meet the criteria, can be done by the end of 2024, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And yes, this project is really great, but you don't get to choose that one, you know? So I do agree, I mean, all of our boards and commissions give us recommendations. So I think recommendations is exactly what we're expecting. I think the council gets elected to make the final, the tough final decisions. So they are recommendations. And I think we make that really, again, really clear to the public that that's what they're engaged in, that's the process they're engaged in. And then I also agree, go back to the committee of the whole after the survey's complete. Yeah. So those are my comments.
Great. Thank you. So I think on the first question, we've given enough detail and guidance to the staff on what we would like to see and some of the ideas that we'd like considered. And I agree with the comments that have been made there. Also, I think the trails should be considered with this project. And I have a little bit of a different take on why they should be there. Oftentimes, when we're seeking grant funding, if you have that interconnection, that multimodal option in the grant application, it puts your points up a little bit higher. It makes you a little bit more eligible for funding and makes the project a little bit better. So I know the administration is consistently thinking about how we go out and get help from other government entities and putting the trails in there will help make those projects even better in the process. And then I do agree that it should be a recommendation back to the council, not a guarantee of funding. And it should go back to the council. The council of the whole is the right, committee of the whole, excuse me, is the right place to come back to or a full city council meeting, depending on your scheduling and how much can get done and the timing of that. I don't see a real distinction between coming back to a cower, coming back to the city council, but I'll leave that to the administration and leadership to work through that scheduling. Other comments, questions, anything else? Deputy President Hall.
Just real quick, too, then, for the minute, since this will then be circulated back to the full council. In the mobility master plan appendancy, or appendix on page 110, under climate and quality of life, policy number 2.6 is to support the implementation of the park strategic plan, including the development of the green necklace, which was stated by one of our community commentators today, fully connected regional trail system and secondary trail connections. So I would definitely say that including these kinds of trail projects in this investment fund is in line and aligned with the vision of the mobility master plan. Thanks.
Okay. I think that gives the administration guidance. I'll look over, make sure that I have nods. Any questions from administration staff on direction we're suggesting tonight?
No, I think feedback, I took copious notes and appreciate all of your direction.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda then says announcements at number five. So I'll look and see if there are announcements from members of the committee. I'm just reading what's on the screen, guys. All right, no announcements. Go ahead.
Just real quick then to announce to the public again, if you haven't already seen that the city council will be having our annual summer retreat to focus on our budget development priorities for the upcoming biennium, and that'll be this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Tibbetts Manor, I believe. So if you have any interest in providing any public comment during that special meeting of the city council, you can do so in person or virtually. Right? Okay. Thanks.
And as a chamber liaison from the council, I would just announce that Mayor Polly is scheduled to speak July 21st to the chamber to give a state-of-the-city summary or address, basically. And that meeting is at noon. You can check the chamber website for additional details on that luncheon event. All right. Any other business? Deputy Administrator.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. I believe you have a couple of other items you wanted to discuss tonight with this committee. First is the joint meeting with the Transportation Advisory Board. I don't know if you wanted to comment further on that, if you want me to keep going?
Yeah, go ahead and fill in the committee. We're trying to stay in touch with the boards and commissions that we have an involvement with. And so we have one, which is fantastic. So hopefully, we're able to arrange a meeting of some sort. But if you could give us an update, that'd be much appreciated.
Great. Well, I think originally, or a while ago, when we were talking about meeting back in person, we're welcoming our boards and commissions back in person, some of them this month, including TAB, the Transportation Advisory Board. And so I know Deputy Council President, you were looking for, at one point, you were looking for people to sign up to go to those committees and welcome back our Transportation Advisory Board members in person. We do have one of those meetings coming up this month. I'm struggling to find it right now, but maybe while I'm talking, the deputy clerk can help do my research for me. So that would be something that we could invite a council member from this committee if you would like to go and attend and welcome them back and kind of talk to them before the meeting or after. I wanted to test, just see if there was interest in that. And another opportunity that I know we were interested in facilitating is perhaps having a joint meeting with the Transportation Advisory Board in September. So with them taking the month of August off, it seems like that would be the next opportunity to really discuss how this committee and the Transportation Advisory Board could work together, what would some of those items be, and any other agenda items that council would like to discuss. So I think those were the two items, Councilmember Joe, that you had wanted to make sure we'd bring up tonight.
Thank you very much. So as was pointed out, when we were discussing the outreach for the funding, one of the items was we meet them where they are. We meet the citizens where they are. And so I think it's important, if we do have a joint meeting, that we go to their night, their regular night of their meetings, so they're not taking an additional night out of their schedule, and meet them during their cap- out of their schedule, and meet them during their, their regular meeting and, and sit down and talk with them. But I'd certainly like to hear any additional thoughts on, on either one of the topics, meeting in September and then meeting with them. And then Deputy President Hall, you did put out that list that had all the committees and then you, we took it back because we had rolled back our, our rollout of in-person meetings. Is that list, list going to come out again? And can we pre-fill it with one of us maybe in the TAB meeting?
Great suggestion, yes. That actually will be coming out in the next few days to council members. We do have a refreshed list. And to confirm, the next Transportation Advisory Board is, board meeting is next Thursday, July 21st at 6:00 p.m. Unfortunately, I'm not able to attend. I do think it would be a great idea for one of the three of us to attend that. So if you happen to be available, that would be great. Otherwise, we'll make the opportunity available to the full council. As for a joint meeting with the Transportation Advisory Board, I think that's an excellent idea. I think as public policymakers, it might be fruitful to have a discussion about their work plan for the next year. And is that in alignment with kind of the goals and desired objectives that council has for mobility into the next year?
Looking at the 21st, the East King County Legislative Coalition is having their wrap-up that evening from 3:30 to 5:30. Many of you might have seen that announcement. I've already committed to attend that. But Councilmember Di Michele, do you have that evening free or?
I do have that evening free and, whoops, sorry. I do have that evening free and I'd be glad to go. So that's the TAB.
Fantastic. So let's pre-fill Councilmember Barb Di Michele's name into the list for going to the first in-person committee meeting for the TAB. And then is everyone basically in agreement that in September, we should try to meet with them as a joint meeting and their regular meeting night if, if at all possible? Okay.
Well, I'm just trying to think about if, if we're going to do that, so we won't have another meeting until our next committee meeting in September, right? Because I imagine we're not meeting in August or this committee?
This committee does meet in August.
Ooh, okay. Well, then I wonder if maybe we could have a discussion with council at the next go-to-the-order or something like that to talk about, we, we're thinking about having this joint meeting, what would be a productive conversation to have with this board? And we were thinking potentially of reviewing their work plan to make sure it's in line with where we would like to go with mobility. We've had a lot of discussion now both at this committee and at the council level about better aligning the CIP process with the Mobility Master Plan and with multimodal, multimobility. So maybe that could be kind of a big thing, but I also don't want to presume council intent just by this committee meeting with TAB. So I'm not sure what the other committee members think in terms of how we want to next steps and to ensure we have a productive conversation with TAB.
One suggestion I might have is that maybe the leadership and administration, just throw that question out for discussion, you know, not a lengthy discussion, but if they have some thoughts. My thought personally is that we don't necessarily want to burden it with too much technical stuff and project stuff, but more, you know, let's have a conversation about what is the best way that, that we can get information to you that is helpful to what you're trying to achieve and what other support from the council do you need? Really trying to meet them where they are to, to help them do their job more efficiently, to do their job better and to feel more fulfilled when they do their job because they are volunteering their time to the city, you know? And we want to make sure that we appreciate that, acknowledge that and support it in any way, shape or form. So my general take is to kind of steer away from a, a project kind of list or a CIP or, you know, a big project like that, but work more on the relationship, so to speak, on how we can function a little bit better and, and support one another. But I'll defer to other committee members, they have comments as well.
I agree. I think relationships are, are the thing that we should be emphasizing. I always like to get transit on the table. So I don't know what we would do with that, but I just want to make sure we're not just focused on roads when we're talking about transportation, but we're also talking about the transit and mobility issues that we face as a community, so. But I think first of all, we get to know each other and then find out what their passions are and then we go from there, so.
Go ahead.
Just one more comment then. I completely agree with what you said in terms of how we're approaching them to see if they need any support from us. Another thing though, that I want to make sure this committee doesn't lose is I've, I've met with the Transportation Advisory Board leadership previously and they're very interested in how they can better support us as decision makers. So I think that that is kind of the productive conversation that council needs to have, but maybe this committee has it first and then goes to council. So maybe that could be a discussion we have at the next committee meeting.
Okay. Could you at least bring it up in a weekly leadership meeting with?
I think that's a great suggestion.
The admin and then just to get their feedback?
We'll do.
Fantastic, that's great. Does that give you enough guidance or Deputy Administrator Snyder? Go ahead.
Thank you. That was extremely helpful. Great conversation. Just if we talk about going to TAB in September, it looks like September 15th would be their regular meeting day. So I just want to check availability before I start to coordinate with TAB.
That looks fine for me. I'm in an all-day conference on built green projects, so it'll be just a great day.
Great. Thank, thank you very much, council. Appreciate that.
Okay. Any other business or announcements? Go-to-the-order items for this committee, for the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee on July 12th? If not, then we are adjourned at 7:28.